I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Prove agenda guys.
Thanks a much for approve the agendas written.
Jeremy has a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Seer second, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Thank you Jeff.
You're welcome.
We have any personal appearances? I don't see them. Alright, part of the course. Emergency management.
Ken is out sick tonight.
Okay.
He just asked me to just let you all know he wouldn't be able to make it. So we got for that.
Okay. Thank you Chief, what do you have?
Um, I don't really have anything, it's pretty much status quo for us winding down the year, we're, we're gonna be over four hundred calls, that's how we get done at the end of the year. Um, as far as calls for service. Um, I was not able to attend the dinner Saturday night, I apologize for that, had uh, grandkids in a program at school, so had to do that, but, but I do wanna thank you all for that. And uh, it was very nice, I heard everybody had a good time. Uh, other than that, unless there's questions or anything that you need from me, I don't have anything else right now.
Jeff, you have anything for Chief?
Good.
Alright.
Yes sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Chief Dillon's police reports in the packet. Jeff, you have anything over the police report?
No, I had a chance to just take a look at it, it's uh, pre-standard.
Okay. Ryan, do you have something for us tonight?
So um, I've submitted the standard reports. Since we, we switched um, our investments, uh, we actually have one calendar year uh, now. The city has earned uh, two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in interest since we made that change over the last year. Uh, so far, uh, you can see where we, where we are at in this fiscal year. We are going through insurance renewals. Our health insurance, initially, we were looking at about a seven point nine percent increase. Uh, we were able to make some changes, make some adjustments, um, switched from MetLife to principal, and we were able to get that renewal at three point four percent. I was expecting a double digit uh, with everything else that's going on, so the fact that we're at three point four percent for our increase, um, we're fortunate.
Anything under thirteen is impressive, right, these days?
Um, one of the things that the uh, the park board has, has mentioned, uh, they would, they would like to see us pursue grants. Most of the grants for, for parks uh, require a match. Um, there's very few at eighty-twenty, most of them are at fifty-fifty. Well, the park doesn't have a lot of money. And so, as I pursue those, um, will, will the board entertain, um, considering the match at various levels as we move forward with that? Not obligating us to anything, but, like I said, the, the park just doesn't have the reserve. And so, um, that, they'd like to do some things, but, you know, just, it takes money. So I just wanted to ask that, if you guys were, uh, would entertain that, again, it'd be brought to you before any decisions are made, uh, anything that would obligate us, but, um, and it would also allow more input from this board into um, what the park is doing, because we would be basically financing some of the projects.
Does it take a motion or anything?
No, it doesn't, doesn't take a motion, I just-
I'm definitely in on that, I'll definitely go with that.
Would it, that would come from?
Uh, just some of the, the reserves, some of the, some of the accounts, some of the investments that we have.
Okay.
And it would, it would take a budget, yes sir?
Can we uh, still tap into ARPA funds in situations like that?
Uh, you know what, we, we can, uh, we still have uh, forty-eight thousand dollars of ARPA uh, funds that have not been obligated to this point, so that would uh, that would be a source, yes sir?
Okay, I'd like to use one.
Okay. Alright, then I will, I will proceed. Um, and that's all I had.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Public works?
Guys wanted to list a, to-do list, so. If I went forward about to Ryan.
So the first one is done and the second one is to be, to be done, is that what that second?
What do you mean?
That, that is a to-do list? Yeah.
Oh, uh, this is all stuff to do, anything you see, see has been stretched through-
Just different categories.
And something's been accomplished.
Right.
But the list just keeps growing, some of these items are ten years old probably.
Is that list that old?
We wind up-
It just gets copied over and copied over?
We wind up some in different directions.
Sure.
And then like, you see, there's some things council members have mentioned and things like that are on the list, just, the number just hasn't come to the top of the list yet.
Sure.
What uh, I mean, I see the top thing on the list is outer road, what's the status on that? I thought we, I thought we were gonna overlay it.
We need to do some over-overlay. Um, and that, that, that kind of that, and then, and then some of it falls on Ryan's shoulders too, for his getting RFP to try to get the microseal on the road. We were working back and forth between trying to get to west side of town, chip and seal the streets we had over, and we had overlaid, had to bounce back and forth, because type oil, we'd use two types of oils, so we'd use the thinner oil to mix the patch we laid, but we'd use a heavier oil to lay the, lay the patch width, so. We had that in the truck, we'd just go ahead and fill it back up with that, go to west side of town, chip and seal the street or two, whatever we could do, and then put the lighter oil in, mix some more patch, and just, just revolve and deal. Uh, scooter asked us to stop for at one point there, because it was up against corn harvest.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, and some of it didn't turn out as nice, so one or two, but, but still, in a lot of ways, it's, it's better than just that big old thud, thud, thud deal.
And we, we were still moving forward with the overlay, we ran up against their schedules, trying to fit us in, and so, we'll put the RFP out and we'll be in the, the mix for the spring projects. And so, it's, it's actually budgeted for this year, it was in our budget.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and I, I was just confused, I, I noticed the patchwork, which it is better with the patchwork, by the way.
It looked perfect, but it's better.
Uh, but it, I'm, I drive on that road every day, it's, but, it's better, but it, it wasn't quite what I thought we were gonna be doing, so.
No, this, this was just kinda, to take that, to take some of the ripple out, and so, in hopes that it would make the, the overlay, the microseal, um, that much more smooth.
Gotcha.
Yeah, some material we used wasn't being kinda gummy, so it just won't tear, so it couldn't get a smooth lay on. Uh, gravy blade chopped a little bit, it doesn't, it doesn't have, the only places don't have, throw me out and see my pickup coming around town now.
Yeah.
Ryan, just curious, the uh, I know we got the grant for that first street sidewalks. Uh, will that add any work responsibility to Mark and his team? Uh, when will that happen?
So, that project won't add any, uh, anything to our local staff. The next step in that process is uh, MoDOT will actually uh, create the contract for us to sign, um, I'm expecting that anytime. And then, we will have to go through the process of selecting an engineer. Um, once we have the engineer, then the engineer will start putting the things out for bid uh, with us, and they basically spearhead that project, they, they oversee it. Um, if, if Mark and the crew wanna stop by and take a look, they can, but, everything will be done with uh, subcontractors.
Anybody else?
I, I had one other item, I forgot.
Okay.
The annual chamber dinner is uh, January twentieth. So for anybody who would like to attend, if you would let me know, and we will get the tickets um, ordered.
Where's it at this year?
Um, Frontier Village.
That's right.
Yep.
I remember reading that. Hopefully it's, no problems. Alright. Anybody got any questions on the water report? Good on the water report Jeff?
Yes sir.
Okay. Dave?
Uh, January fourth will be our next uh, park board meeting. Um, new things coming next year, anybody like to be involved, please come to meetings.
Remind me again how many we're short?
Actually, I believe we're full right now, we got, we're missing one actually.
It depends if we set off, yeah.
If you wanna, um, is it Mr. Miller?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know we'll take us one on that, so yeah, other than that, yeah, we're good.
Mr. Stone?
Nothing for me. Good to see you guys.
Jeremy?
Nope.
Nope. Alright, moving on to item number seven.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second that?
All in favor of approving consent agenda?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
No one finished business? That I know of? New business.
So, it is time for, um, again, insurance renewal, so we have a representative uh, from Mike Keith Insurance, if you'd like to use the- Unfortunately, with this one, we did not escape a uh, an increase. But I don't think it's too bad considering what's going on in just the industry as a whole.
That is absolutely correct.
Thanks.
So we had a couple different things that we want to talk about this evening, uh, so this is gonna be our MoFirm renewal, um, we have our cyber renewal as well. And then we wanna, I wanna touch base with everybody a little bit about pollution, um, I won't waste a bunch of time on it. So I have a handout that I'll give everybody on pollution, we'll do some touch points on it, have a little bit of a conversation on it, and then we will, uh, we'll move on past it. We'll circle back on it within ninety days, if at all possible. This is the final line for the class. Go through the MoFirm renewal first. This year, the outline on it is a little bit different than years past. What we've done is we've put a comparison between the last year's and this year upcoming renewal. So you're gonna see uh, twenty-three, twenty-four in the left-hand column and twenty-four, twenty-five, which is our upcoming. And each line of business, we'll go down through these, we'll, I'll give you a quick synopsis on each one of the coverages and the coverage amounts that we have for it, at any time if anybody's got any questions, by all means, just, just shout. So, first line of coverage is gonna be our auto line of coverage, we'll go through an auto schedule, make sure that all our, all our autos are adequate. We do have two autos that we uh, we added to the list this year. Our auto liability is two million dollars per occurrence. No annual aggregate. We're also covered by sovereign immunity, Missouri state sovereign immunity limits. Uh, for twenty-twenty-three, we're four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand per accident, three million, two hundred and fifty-eight, three hundred, oops, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars per occurrence. We have comp and collision deductible set at five hundred dollars. Our auto liability deductible is a thousand. And our hired and non-owned liability deductible is also a thousand. Hired and non-owned auto liability is, if you had uh, one of your, uh, one of the street guys jumping his own vehicle, one of you guys jumping your vehicle, run down and grab a part from a parts store, you're involved in an accident in transit, you're actually on the job, if they were to, if there was bodily injury or property damage uh, out of that, and the city was sued, that's where the coverage would be picked up. That individual's auto liability would be primary for bodily injury and property damage. Any questions on that piece of it? Next piece is our crime. We have uh, small sub-limits for each one of our crime, fidelity or employee theft, forgery and alteration, we have fifty thousand. On-premise, in-transit, computer fraud is all fifty thousand, we have a claims expense of five thousand and a deductible of one thousand. Our general liabilities below that, again, this is a two million dollar per occurrence, no annual aggregate. This too is covered by Missouri state sovereign immunity limits. We have a thousand dollar deductible that applies to each claim there. Next is our employee benefits liability. A quick synopsis on this is if you were to hire an individual and their significant other was supposed to be uh, included on the employee benefits and were not, they were, they had an accident needing to seek medical attention, this is actually where the coverage would come up, it'd be on your liability. We have a two million dollar per occurrence, no annual aggregate, with a thousand dollar deductible. Employee practices liability, uh, this is gonna be your hiring, firing, discrimination coverages. Again, it's two million dollar per occurrence, no annual um, aggregate, it carries a five thousand dollar deductible. Below, public officials errors and omissions, uh, this is for the decisions that you all make on this board. If one of our constituents was to bring a lawsuit against you all, this is where that coverage would be brought up. You have two million dollar uh, per claim, no annual aggregate, with a thousand dollar deductible. Law enforcement liability, pretty self-explanatory, uh, false detention, false arrest, abuse. Uh, below is our property, this is where we're gonna see the biggest increase, um, if you, if you're, if you've seen property values and, and way things are moving in the property world, you know, that, that nowadays, everything's a little bit more expensive to, to build a home. So, we've taken a little bit of an increase on that, we've also increased the TIV, or total insured value, uh, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and ten dollars to each one of the buildings overall. So that's where our biggest increase is at. However, we do carry um, a thousand dollar deductible per building versus uh, per occurrence versus uh, per building, and a twenty-five hundred dollar equipment breakdown, equipment breakdown coverage is, um, so if we use this building, for example, if a transformer blew across the um, across the street, and it, it generated artificial electrical current, damaged our HVAC, our computers, because this building is described as the insured premise, that's where that coverage would be picked up. We have special form of coverage with replacement costs on all our property schedule. Below is our inland marine, inland marine coverage is uh, for equipment that moves to and from, it's not stationary in any one, one spot. Below, you'll see our premiums that are allocated for this year. Any questions on any of that before we move on to the schedules? Nope.
And I would just remind everybody, last year, we were looking at a large increase, uh, we actually were able to drop it down, so this actually just kinda moves us to, to basically where we would've been before we switched to MoFirm last year.
Correct.
If that's, so.
We had a monoline property coverage last year, um, so then we switched that, we went to, to MoFirm, all with one carrier versus many carriers in the state of Missouri, if, to talk a little bit about insurance, uh, we're kinda going into a hard market with insurance where, where risks are hard to place. Some insurance companies don't even wanna write certain types of risk, so they, they're completely eliminating those. So we're, we're seeing a, a paradigm change in, in the insurance world right now. Um, so this first uh, schedule here is our auto schedule, we'll move it pretty, move through it pretty quick. So what I'll do is I'll just ask everybody to take a, take a look through it, and if there's anything that stands out that you all are aware of, um, let me know. We added that uh, second one down, the number twenty-four auto, the two thousand eleven Ford E-two fifty. And on the third page, we added number nineteen, which is that twenty-twenty-two uh, Ram. Uh, the only other change that I had for this, this past year is we removed a two thousand nine Chevy half-ton pickup. We send these over prior to, to make sure that everything is, is checked and balances, but, it never fails, there's always something that comes up, so. We can move to the next section, the next section is gonna be our, our property section. Then again, I'll, I'll have you take a look through, through this, um, you're gonna see the, the location, the address, the description of it, the square footage of each building, the value that is current on the building, uh, the content value, EDP is electronic data processing value, business income amount, the total insured value, which is everything added up, property deductible, the EBD deductible, and then the contribution that's allocated toward each location.
We will have another building to add to this.
Okay, just let us know, we can do that on endorsement.
The doghouse?
Yes sir. We, we had a, a kennel delivered.
Oh, nice. Um, the next is our equipment schedule, uh, this is gonna be for the equipment, like I said, that is mobile. Take a quick look through there and see if there's anything that stands out. Wanna make sure that we have all our sirens, pumps, generators, things that are overlooked. Make sure the values on everything seem to be, to be correct to the best of your ability. Can move on to the next section, um, I'll kinda glance through this as well, this is just MoFirm's participation highlights. It's just a, uh, kind of a synopsis of the way that the program uh, was initiated, the cost of the program, and the claims administration that's associated with the program. Uh, the next page that you're gonna see is, is the MoFirm coverages, uh, that subsection there says part one and part two. That's the difference between our general liability for gross negligence, that's on our part, and what's covered by Missouri state statute, immunity, uh, immunity statute. The next page is just liability coverage placement requirements, uh, the three bullet points that you see there, um, are required to, to carry liability with this company, uh, we, we meet each one of those. And the next page is, is the top is the, the crime section that we talked about on the very first page, and below is our earth movement deductibles, which is twenty-five thousand per occurrence, and our flood deductible, which is twenty-five thousand per occurrence. Again, the thing to note there is it's per occurrence, not per building. A per occurrence deductibles, if everything was flooded at one time, there'd be one twenty-five thousand dollar deductible that would apply to it versus each building having a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. Anybody have any questions on the, the renewal? Next, I'll have you uh, bring your attention to the cowbell cyber, the cowbell cyber is, is a product that we brought on last year. Um, at Mike Keith Insurance, one thing that we're wanting to do is make sure we stay out in front of uh, the ever-changing market of insurance and, and the claims that are coming up, things that are prevalent. So, um, MoFirm did away with their, their cyber, they still have their crime, but not a cyber, so what we did is we brought in a, a third party, a TPA for our um, cyber. And you'll see, it's down a little bit from last year, I think it's down nine percent from last year. Same coverage is a hundred thousand dollar aggregate limit, it does carry a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. Uh, but this is gonna be your uh, security breach, um, hardware replacement costs, telecommunications frauds, uh, ransomware, things, things of that nature. Like I said, I won't, won't go into, to too much on that, anybody have any questions on, on that piece of it? Alright, I know everybody loves talking about insurance, so let's uh, move on to the next piece real quick. Um, the next piece here is gonna be uh, pollution. So, in the years past, you, you've, you've probably heard that uh, mold, when mold became pretty prevalent, mold was, you know, detrimental to everybody, um, pollution is kinda that new ever-changing thing. So in the world of insurance, pollution has the broadest definition. Uh, the definition of pollution is something that is not designed in its original place. So, trash truck takes a corner, something sloshes out, that's pollution. John Dare was fined, John Dare would, would clean their combines out before they bring them into their shops, EPA came along and charged him with the pollution, um, because it was the, the grease and everything that was off of that. So, we do have exposures, we have exposures for waste treatment pro, uh, plants, if they were to flood for some odd reason, uh, we do have that exposure. So what I wanted to do tonight is, is I just wanted to kinda, we, we ran a quote for you, based on our exposures, this has a million dollars in coverage, it carries a ten thousand dollar deductible. And just to kinda take a look at it, look over it, and come back, we can come back in ninety days, uh, revisit it, but I just wanted to kinda bring it to the forefront and say that, hey, we, you know, we're being proactive and looking at these things for you, so. Does anybody have any questions on a pollution piece, or anything about insurance in general? Do you have any questions Jeff? Anybody else?
Sorry, I forgot to unmute there Jeff.
You're alright. If there's no questions, then I present this for your all's approval on both the cowbell cyber and the MoFirm renewal.
This, this exceeds my purchasing authority, which is why it's being brought to you.
Right.
Do we need to make any kind of amendment to it?
Since we're producing-
Listen, pay, fix up. Missing the doghouse on there, I don't can't worry.
What we'll do is we'll just add it as an endorsement.
Okay.
I can't imagine it's gonna change the-
Not significant.
No, no.
Do you know what the uh, value of it is?
Thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars.
Pretty precise.
Right. Jeff wanna know what the percentage of increase was over last year?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen percent. Nineteen Jeff. We're seeing that, like I said, we, we took that total insured value up eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we, we've seen a ten percent in, increase on each building. Um, that's something that, that we've talked about, coming in, doing a risk analysis on all the buildings and making sure that we are adequately insured on everything. Um, but we're seeing property values go up, um, in the years past, it, it was, it was auto, auto rates, we're, we're going through the groups, so now property's just kinda catching up with the, the market.
Last question?
Sir.
Hang on Mark.
Go ahead sir.
Go ahead.
Just, just from a logistics, logistics point of view, do we need to make any amendments to our annual budget to accommodate this increase?
Um, I will take a look to see, um, cause I don't, I don't think I budgeted exactly what our premium was last year. Um, let me look at that, and then we'll bring it, if we need an increase, we'll do the budget adjustment at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Mark?
On the, on the flood insurance, is that some like, you're talking about something that's in a flood plain? Or is it, and a building just flooded, or are you talking, so like pipe bust in the building and floods the building?
Uh, good question, so uh, flood is actually uh, considered any, any body of water that exerts pressure from the outside in. So a stream, whether it's in a flood plain or not, uh, we're gonna have flood coverage, which is uh, important for this program, because most of the time flood is administered by FEMA. And so, when a water line breaks inside, it's a covered peril based on the level of coverage we have. So, we have special form of coverage, and it would be covered as well.
It would be covered on different type of, part of policy then?
It would be a property coverage, both of those are a property coverage, there'd be a different deductible though.
Flood is from outside in rather than inside out.
Yes sir.
We really don't have, it's not a very tall premium, we really don't have anything that I would consider being flood plain.
So, it's included in- So it's included in, in the participation of this program. It's, it's not line itemed out or allocated.
It's not something you can knock out.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And the pollution deal, is that, if somebody dumps pollution on us, or if we dump pollution in the stream?
It's based on your liability. So anything, it, your liability or the city's liability, anything that you all would be liable to would be that. It wouldn't be liable for someone else.
If we dumped something in the stream.
Yeah. Or if you, we, we were having conversations about different claim scenario on that. So, it could be something that you wouldn't even think about. You condemn a home, that home has asbestos in it, wind comes and blows that house down, contaminates the neighbor's property, and they get an attorney and sue you. There, there's a lot of caveats like that, that, that we don't even think about. Normally, we think about water, or we, we think about those things. There's a lot of different factors that come into place with that. So, and like I said, I, I won't keep you, I could talk all night about insurance and nobody wants that. So, I can come back on another day. We, we can, you know, approach that, that subject, and we can get into, to a little bit more details on it.
I'm just curious if, if there's a line item we can knock out and save some money if we didn't have that flood insurance bonus in there or something like that.
All right.
We'll, we'll have that conversation sooner than later.
Okay, yeah, that's perfect.
The pollution insurance is, so we, we need to renew the MOPRM for sure.
Yes, sir.
Or something of that type.
Yes, sir.
And the cyber insurance, but the, the pollution being new is something we can talk about at a later time.
Yes, sir.
Is that something that if we, if we were to sign up for this in a couple of months, it would be prorated and then matched up the next time so we could do everything at once next year?
Um, you know, that's a great question. I could ask the carrier if we do that. Normally, it's a twelve-month policy period. So whenever it goes into inception, inception, we would, it would be twelve months. We may be able to try to do something like that, do a short-term premium on it, lessen the premium on it for eight months, nine months versus twelve months, and, and see what we can do.
Just seems like it'd be easier next year instead of having to talk about insurance and then talk about it again two months.
Well, I think our.
Not that you're not a, you know, a great personality.
Yeah, no, I, I know, I completely understand. So there are different, different effective dates on things. So our work comp has a four-one effective date. So whenever we get closer to that, we come in, we have those conversations as well. It may not be as, you know, a big a burden to, to have it broke up to where we can have those conversations. As long as we can, we know what we can allocate for our budget moving forward.
How we feel about the cowbell? Are we going to have this on, or just kind of one of these, add it on here?
No, no, the cowbells, yeah.
So is that something, so, just, you guys covered cyber before, and now you don't, so you're bringing in the third party? I, I guess I didn't, did we have cowbell before?
Yes.
You did.
We did, okay.
So MOPRM did away, two years ago, they did away with their cyber program entirely. So we have to bring something back to the table and says, hey, this is something that's comparable. Without going to a full-blown cyber policy where we have two parts authentication, we have to have an IT department come in and make sure that you qualify. There's a lot of stipulations. So, tit-for-tat, th- this is a comparable product, subject to the deductible. The deductible on the cowbell policy was a little bit higher than what it was on the old MOPRM policy.
Have a motion.
Think we can get out of it.
Well, make a motion that we accept the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five MOPRM insurance with cowbell.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Everybody having a merry Christmas.
Me too.
Me too.
You too, be safe.
Thank you. Surely you're covering, what's that? Paul, were we?
Yeah, teacher working.
No, Paul retired, actually.
Alrighty. Incentive bonus for employees.
Yes, sir. So, last year, this time, the, the board approved a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar after taxes incentive bonus for employees, and so, bringing that back before the board if they wanted to reconsider it for this year.
Discussion?
So it's a Christmas bonus?
It's an incentive bonus.
It's not a bonus.
You're in, yeah.
It's, we can't call it a bonus.
Because of.
It's an incentive. Incentive for them to work hard next year. It's more of a pre.
What, do you want to stop just talking?
I'd like to make a motion.
We accept incentive bonus for employees, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for employees.
I second it.
All in favor of the incentive bonus? For lack of a better wording?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Sorry to muddy things up there, my questions.
Thank you. On behalf of the employees, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Christmas Eve is a holiday for employees.
Yes, sir. So, I'm bringing this before you. I've listed a current, I've included a current list of holidays that the employees are eligible for. One of the things around Christmas time that makes it difficult with the limited number of staff that we have in order to have people take off for the holidays, sometimes it's challenging. And so, having the extra day of Christmas Eve Day and then Christmas, it allows people to be off with family because the city is closed, and then it doesn't, it's not as challenging to schedule vacations during that time, if that makes sense. And so it's just, it's just for your consideration.
Do you, if you, so like this year, Christmas Day, now Christmas is on a Monday, Christmas Eve's on a Sunday, so how would that work?
It would be the previous Friday.
So, so do you always, you always take your holidays, if it's on a weekend, you always take it on a Monday or Friday?
Yes, sir.
So like in this case, you would get Friday and Monday?
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason not to do this? Is there a minus?
I, I always err on the side of employees, so.
Sure.
I mean, the only, the only thing is that the city would be closed one extra day, and so that's, that's probably the downside, is that we'd be closed one extra day.
Is there, the only thing that concerns me is, is being closed an extra day, is there somebody on call in case one of our citizens sewer backs up, or, or not one of our citizens, but like the city sewer backs up, or.
Yes.
Uh, something like that happens, and so, so they, they're allowed to, to celebrate Christmas instead.
It's always about right here.
Yeah.
Okay. Just like with law enforcement, you know, there's always somebody that's here, so they just take their, their day, another day and adjust.
Yeah, and I just, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think about this as if I were a citizen, just, and not an alderman, I am a citizen, but also not an alderman. And I'm. Fourteen, you're on, this would give you fourteen paid holidays. That's a lot. So, I don't know, I'm just, if, I'm, I, I, I mean, I would love to, it just seems, it just seems like a lot, that's all.
Are there any other of the paid holidays that aren't regular federal holidays? Like out of the ordinary? I'm not seeing any here on the list.
Yeah, Truman's birthday is not a federal holiday, but it is a state holiday.
It's a state holiday.
Yes.
Okay.
I think I'm, I was going to say if I was a citizen, and I also have a citizen, I might feel good about having a, a Friday before Christmas off. I mean, if I knew that something was going to go down and we were still covered, then it's Christmas.
No, I, I.
And I totally get where you're coming from, because I was at one point going, well, you put Lincoln's birthday and Washington's birthday on President's Day, and then it all breaks even. But now I feel like I'm Ebenezer Scrooge.
Well, no, I, I, I mean, I, but I would, you know, if it were me, I'd just, if, if, you know, cut four of these and give them the whole week of Christmas off, I don't care, but like, at, at some point, it gets to be too many holidays. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying this is too many holidays. I'm just saying, at some point, it, it gets to be too many holidays from the perspective of people that have to go to work and, and then come in and pay their water bill, or their animal license or whatever, else, else kind of tax that we tax them with. And then they come in here and nobody's here because they're off on holiday. It's, that's all I'm saying. I've, that, I'm just cautious about it, that's all. I'm not saying no, that's in the.
And I will say that the end of the month is slower for citizens interacting with the city. The water bills are due by the fifteenth, so usually towards the end of the month, we see less foot traffic.
And that month in particular, I would expect would be even slower. All right. I totally hear where you're coming from, and I move that we, we add Christmas Eve as a employee holiday.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
What about this pet?
If I get bit by a dog on Christmas Eve, we're, on you.
We, we, we will have coverage, sir. We will have coverage. So, as I was going through our ordinances, the, our pet ordinances, I've highlighted a few passages. The first one is, is that all animals within the city are, that are older than six months are required to be vaccinated. They are required to show proof of that vaccination to the city.
Is that as needed, or is that?
No, that is.
Preactive.
That is actually a, a yearly requirement. This ordinance went into effect in.
Fourteen.
Yes, two thousand and fourteen. The other part of it is that it actually requires that all animals be licensed every year through the city. That it's done, it, it starts in January, and then it's late by March. And so that, that is the current, that's what's required by ordinance that has not been enforced.
It's only one, I think, this year. It looked like.
Yes, that is correct. That is correct. And so, with our new process with the water bills and including informational pieces in the water bills now that we've gone to a letter, this is one that I would like to bring to the attention of citizens along with making sure that they have house numbers on their houses. Make sure that they have their ATVs, UTVs, and golf carts licensed if they're within the city limits. And so this was, this was kind of an, an informational item. We've, we've kind of had conversations about this in the past. And so that's why I brought it before you as a discussion.
I think we should put this letter out around Christmas time. That'll really cheer people up. I'm being sarcastic. You go ahead and put that in the paper, too.
He's got a special box for Jeremy.
Ryan, I read through this, and so, I, I know that we'll need to make some, some changes to it. Cover page three, section seven, the animal shelter portion. So I'm assuming you, you've got something in mind to make that change there. That will, that's what we'll add in, our, our new shelter information and get rid of whatever's there.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll have, we'll have to update this. I, I would point out that the, the license fee for animals that are spayed, neutered, is, is just five dollars per animal. Seven fifty for any unneutered male, and then ten dollars for each unspayed female.
Yeah, as I was looking through here, one of the, the other things bouncing around my head was, are, you know, we have an abundance of cats right around town, so, you know, just thinking forwards, how, how does that play out? Where we go to the house lady corner there, they, we've got that empty, used to be a church, used to be a lot of buildings there. And there's probably a dozen cats that live underneath that building. You know, what, how do we address that?
So there's, there's several different ways that we can tackle that. The first way is that, you know, we could, we could go and, we can round them up, and then we can rehome them through the arrangements that, that we have through different animal shelters, different, different groups. The other thing that is possible, there has been a push to take feral cats and actually bring them in, spay and neuter them, and then, you know, you could even release them back because at least then they're not going to continue to increase the population. And so that's been a very popular program with a lot of different cities. And the, the price of the licensing actually helps to cover some of those costs or things that the, the city would do. And so it's, it's kind of an offset. Unfortunately, people who actually take care of their pets and do the things that they're supposed to do often cover the cost for the people who don't. It's, it's just the reality of it. And so, like I said, there's, there's definitely different ways to handle it, it's just which one do we want to pursue?
Just whenever we want to head that direction, that house that's immediately north of the four flash there, Virginia Second?
Yes.
That would be a good place to get started.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's three or four houses we've identified that definitely need attention.
So you're, this is just discussion. We're not asking to amend or put anything into.
Actually, it, it's a discussion item. You gentlemen can choose to amend, you can choose to change. That is within your purview.
Okay, if you have your dog impounded, let's say you go up to the pound to get your dog. And we're going to charge you your license fee before you can get your dog out, plus the fee, correct?
If, if.
You're going to have to register your dog to the city before you can take it out of the pound.
That is correct.
How are we going to deal with the vaccination? We don't have a vet on hand. We, we're releasing a dog that's not vaccinated back into our community.
At that point, what we would do is, we would have, we'd get their, their contact information, and then we would require them
Within.
within a certain amount of time to have the, the animal.
I think that needs to be put in there that if you, as far as the penalty goes, that you must have your dog thirty days, sixty days. If you're going to pull it out, if it's wandering, I still think we're probably going to get the same response we've got now. People aren't going to do anything until their dogs are pounded. We're not out there knocking on doors, seeing if your dog's got it, but once it gets there, we can't release them out of the pound until we're sure that they're a safe animal going back in our community.
Well, and the other thing I'd like to point out is that by requiring everybody to license their pets, it's, it's not, it's not just a, a revenue generation. What it is, is that when we do come across an animal that, you know, got out of somebody's house, you know, our first attempt is just to get the animal home. And our biggest problem now is, is that we, we have animals that, I mean, they'll have, they'll have collars, but they'll have no contact information. So we have no way to get that animal home. And, you know, that's really what we want. We, we don't want to have animals stored. We want them back in their home. And so, we don't even see fining, you know, the people unless it becomes a reoccurring problem. Because again, we just want to reunite the animal and the owner. This actually helps to do that, because as long as everybody, you know, follows, follows the law, when an animal gets out, we'll be able to cross-reference even the tag number, even if they don't have contact number. We'll see who it is, and, you know, we can even take the animal to the home.
Well, you said it yourself, that you're, you're at, what you're doing is asking responsible citizens to pay for the animals that irresponsible citizens either get or animals make themselves. And I, quite frankly, I think we're looking for a problem that doesn't exist here, or a problem that's not, that there's no solution to. We're, we're never going to get to a point where there's no animals in this town. We're never going to get to a point where every animal in this town's in somebody's house. So I just, it's, this, there's other things we could be spending our time and money on, that's all. And I don't care what you say about this is all about safety and whatnot, when you, you, when you tell everybody that they, that they're going to have to start paying a licensing fee for every pet that they have when they haven't done it in the last however many years, or the entire existence of this town, that's, the way it's going to be viewed is that we're taxing the people. And, you know, throw it on top of rising water bills and housing costs and, you know, everything else that they want to complain about, and, you know, I know that there's some squeaky wheels and there's. they wanna complain about and, you know, I know that there's some squeaky wheels and there's some people that don't like dogs barking and I'm one of those people, I don't like dogs barking, but I'm not, I'm not asking, you know, I, I live in a town with other people, that's part of it, is to deal with people's animals sometimes. Um, so that's.
I don't think we're gonna get that many poor people to sign up for it. I just, I mean, I, that's okay, but I want people aware that when your dog does go to the pound and if it does get out, that you're responsible for your dog and these are the fees you're gonna pay, so they don't go up to the pound and go, what? Yeah, well, it's gonna be about two hundred bucks, that they're not blindsided. Now, as long as that information gets out to public, whether it'll get a few more people or not, I don't think it really will, but it'll be that poor people that are, wow, we can't get a little rover back because we have two hundred bucks today.
But it won't be two hundred, I don't know what it costs, I don't know the cost for rabies.
They should be aware of the fees.
It doesn't bother me that somebody has a dog in their backyard that's never registered and never leaves the yard. But it also doesn't bother me that we're, we're paying people to pick up a dog, take it out there, take care of it and they have to pay for a, if it's a, if it's a, un, if it's a unneutered boy dog, they've gotta pay eleven dollars to get it back, I think that's a pretty fair deal that we've taken care of their dog that they let loose and.
I'm just saying, I think that people should be aware of that there is a fee and that they just can't keep running back and forth and, you know, maybe it'll get another fee.
And if I paid eleven dollars for my dog to check out, I'd probably put a rock where he's digging, I'd pay more attention. I just think it's a minimal fee for people to keep their dogs, to encourage people to keep their dogs at home.
Yeah, but I think you're talking about the, the licensing fee, not the.
Well, it said a fif- a penalty of fifty percent of the license fee.
Okay.
So, seven fifty for a spayed dog.
That's what, that's to get it out.
That'd be to license it?
Sorry, this is ridiculously long.
That'd be to license it and to, to get it out, would be seven bucks and fifty cents.
The longest ordinance we've looked at.
I know, I started to read, I saw it was highlighted.
Yes, sir.
It's ridiculous.
I started to read, I saw it was highlighted.
I, I, I will say that this one was probably drafted um by a, a law firm to, to cover a municipality. Um, I, I, I'm fairly certain that it was, it was borrowed um back in twenty fourteen, yep.
But I don't think the, Jeremy, I don't think the, I hear what you're saying, but I don't think the prices are outrageous, the numbers are outrageous there.
I don't feel they're outrageous.
And if, and like I said, if somebody never registers their dog and it never leaves their house, it doesn't bother me a bit.
And so, I mean, if we wanna revisit this and actually make changes to, to the language, we absolutely can do that. I need to adjust it for the new kennel in, in our process and, and so um, I'll bring it back before you.
That'll give us time to read it, cause I just read the highlighted part.
It covers about everything you could cover.
It, it's very thorough.
It's very thorough.
It's very thorough.
If you have an animal, you have to pay a fee, uh, it can never go outside, but it must be vaccinated.
That's not what it said.
Uh, it can't ever come in contact with another animal or another person, but you still have to pay for all of its, you know, it's pretty extensive.
So ju- just in the, in the last month, we've had, we've had two instances. Um, we had one over in the um, the park with apartments in which uh a dog, and fortunately this one had, had vaccinated, had been vaccinated and had proof. Um, it actually tacked a neighbor and it actually peeled the skin off of her arm. And then today, we had another dog that got loose um and went after uh an individual on a bike um and caused, caused an accident. Um, and so i- it's, it's not a huge problem, um, but it has been becoming more noticeable um in the instances that we do have with them. And so. But I, I will bring that uh back before you.
Well, I would, I would say this, I think it's becoming more noticeable because they realize that there's a city council that'll do something about it, that's what I think.
That will do something about it.
That will do something about it, or try to do something about it.
What do you mean, it's more noticeable that?
Well, I just think people in the past just ignored that kind of stuff. They didn't worry, they didn't think nobody was gonna do anything about it and they didn't worry about telling anybody about it. So now I think they, we have a, a system in, not a system, but people in place that are trying to do something about it, so now we're hearing more about it. I've lived here a long time and I haven't heard as much stuff go down with animals than I have in the last three years.
Right.
Ryan, just uh, excuse that word there, I found it kind of interesting with all of the vermost legalese in there and then you get to bottom of page nine where it says animals running at large and you literally have a sentence.
They got tired, I guess.
Our, our attorney said, uh, they must've gotten tired.
Just repeating the whole thing.
Yeah.
Did though, yep.
This is more like a statute than a.
Covered everything, guy.
It's, it is ve- it is very thorough, but it's very thorough.
Well, there's parts of it that just quotes say statute.
Yep.
Yeah.
So do you wanna look this over and talk about it next month?
Can we have a special get together?
Absolutely.
For something like this? And other things?
Yes, I was gonna.
Hey, maybe we'll finally get our special get together, we got something worth discussing now.
Well, we also wanted to discuss vision, so I was gonna ask for dates and times uh for calendars and so, so definitely.
Okay. We'll table that. Moving on.
So the next item uh is just our Missouri Rural Water Association membership. Um, it's, it's within, uh, it's within my um, my spending authority, but I wanted to bring it to you just for board approval.
And we.
The four sixty eight seventy two?
Yeah, it's just, it's just to approve our membership in the association, I just wanted to have it by vote. Same way with the Missouri Municipal uh membership. Um, the one for uh casing or basin actually requires an ordinance that we sign every year. Um, these two, I just wanted to do it by, by vote.
And the MML is, or I should say MML, six forty nine ninety.
Yeah.
Alright.
I think a motion to approve membership in Missouri, Missouri Rural Water Association and Missouri Municipal League as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, next one.
So the next one, um, our auditor was here uh last month and he actually um made the recommendation to change our solid waste fund to a department. Um, that particular fund, even though they adopted the language of a fund, they never set it up as a fund, it's always kind of functioned as a department. And basically what it is, is the money is collected uh with the water bill and then we just pay it to our, our carrier. And so it's a flow through, it's an in and out and so instead of designating it as a fund um because of how we operate it, um, switching it to a department. So really, there's, there's no, yes, sir.
Yeah, so as far as, you know, my question when I was reading through this was, um, I know we've been working on reducing the number of checking accounts that we have uh at the bank, so how does this impact that?
So it, it was never um a separate checking account, it was literally, it, it, it was in the general, it was in the general fund. So basically, they've, they've had it kind of mislabeled um ever since it's been created. It was designated as a fund, but it really wasn't a fund. It, it's always operated as a department and so this just kind of cleans that up and so it's actually gonna be uh more properly reflected um in the budget.
Okay, so this does not mean that we're adding another right now at the bank?
Oh, absolutely not, no. We uh, we now use a pooled cash method and so everything is handled through funds and departments and we basically have two bank accounts. We have the general, uh, the general bank account and then we have the ARPA bank account because any grant that we get through the federal government has to flow in and out through the same, through the same direction. So it has to be a separate uh bank account just for accounting and, and reporting purposes. But everything else, it goes through our pooled cash approach.
Anybody got a problem with this all? Make a motion that we pass bill number one one seven seven, twenty three twenty, resolution number twenty three twenty seven by title only. A resolution of the Board of Alderman of the City of Adrian, Missouri, changing the solid waste fund to a city department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, please. Make a motion for bill number eleven seventy seven, resolution number twenty three twenty seven by title only. A resolution of the Board of Alderman of the City of Adrian, Missouri, changing the solid waste fund to a city department. Second. Roll call. Alderman Vic. On your vote?
Yes.
Alderman Bridges?
Yes.
Alderman Sears?
Aye.
Thank you gentlemen.
Alright.
Well, we're almost done.
Discuss water meter connection fees.
So the, the last um water meter connection fee rate adjustment was done in September of two thousand and twelve. Um, now we haven't had a, an overabundance of, of new housing, so uh it really has never caused us to go back and look at, at the costs of, of actual the parts. And so uh Mark, when he did the last um water connection, when he was purchasing the materials, discovered that just the materials are more expensive than what we're currently charging. So anytime we, we do a, a, a connection, um, it's actually more expensive than, than what we collect. Uh, do you remember the exact costs? How much, come on.
Yeah, I'm good. Yeah, Ron, well, Ron's stated it's pretty close. Uh, just looking to see, uh, I think right now we're charging fifteen hundred dollars for a residential connection and we're charging uh three thousand dollars for a, like a two inch connection. Be like John Deere or Car Wars, things like that. Um, I did just, just did get to looking, they did go ahead and factor in the price of the meters, which I think is probably a good idea, cause we got a hundred and fifty dollar deposit. And we got, got it set up on refund deal now, we're, after so long, we'll get it back anyway. Uh, you know, for a good pay, this'll help us recoup the cost of these, some of these meters in, to move forward. Um, for a two inch connection, I'm looking at uh forty six hundred dollars, just the materials, including the meter. And so I'm suggesting take that from three thousand to six thousand, kinda like, cause by the time you do a street cut, you got, you got machine and labor, you can easily, you can easily look at close to about fifteen hun- thousand, fifteen hundred mark. I could actually buffer us a little bit, buy more time before we have to raise it again. The residential, I've got two prices there, a one inch, we got a three quarter, price on three quarter and price on one inch. Um, the price on the one inch is just shy of fifteen hundred for materials, including the meter. I suggest to take that to, to three thousand. I think the water district I'm on, I think, I don't, I remember in base five, it's between three and five thousand dollars, I think for a connection, I think the water district I'm on is maybe five thousand dollars for a residential connection. So I mean, if we're not, I'm, I'm, you got deer in headlights look there looking at me, but, but it's a.
We don't do outside though, do we?
No, but as, as an example.
But I'm saying, okay, in our town, right now, it's twenty, how much is it, build a new home here, what's it gonna cost you?
So right now it's. Uh, it's fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred, and the cost of that is way more than fifteen hundred.
When you're looking at basically that in materials.
Yeah.
You've still got machine and labor.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
All controls.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, we'll point out this, this was, went into effect in two thousand and twelve.
Yes.
It's been.
With the rising cost of everything, you know, I kinda start, you know, I start checking on this or checking on that, what's the current price on this, what's the current price on that? But PVC pipe's four times what it was ten years, you know, back in, in that, you know, say in twelve.
Mark, have you done any light work to find out what other things matter size around us?
I couldn't hear, I get the thing blown there.
Other communities, how much do they cost, have you checked with them, other communities, other towns, see what they charge?
I could check, I could check, I could check around, but like I say, what, the, what water districts, water districts are usually pretty current on not letting things slide too much on them. They'll make sure on the right side of things. Um, but I do wanna state if we go ahead and do with this, I wanna do it with the, you know, moving forward with the exception of one service that we've just put in last week, one for Jeff, uh, for a ditch, for the future addition up here north of the house that just moved in, we went ahead and ran two services in one ditch. Cost saved us some money, saved a headache later on, so just would let them have that. Next one, that's the old fee of the fifteen hundred. But anybody else moving forward, I'd like, I'd like to take it to three thousand for residential. I mean, I, I could come back and get you exact cost, what base five charges, what the district I'm on charges, what, what some other towns. Lot of things you're probably gonna find in other towns that they're, like we were, they didn't, didn't cost one up and they didn't keep the rest of it.
Right.
You definitely wanna be competitive, we don't wanna be fouling over everybody else or anything, but I don't know what.
The most important thing is just to cover the cost.
Sure.
Yes, I don't, I mean, if parts are costing what we're, I mean, if parts cost fifteen hundred and that's what we're getting, you, you know, it's de- it's definitely, probably costs us a thousand dollars in labor every time we put one in, it's just costing us money to put them in.
Yeah, machine and labor and if we do a little, if it's a long side, we do gravel backfill, so you're talking one or two months of rock.
Yeah, we got it.
So six and three cents.
For example, against the water, in fact, you're kinda factoring the meter in too. I'll give you an example, make you, let you sit down, uh, two, the two inch meters we're putting in now are thirteen hundred dollars a piece.
Three thousand enough? No, that, that.
That's included in this number. In this forty, forty six hundred dollars, that's, that's thirteen hundred of it is that me, is the meter.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's unreasonable at all to, to double both of them. That costs the materials more than doubled, costs the labor is more than doubled.
I believe we can do that with the motion here, that's how they did it the last time.
I'll make a motion, we raise our water connection fees um for anything larger than a three quarter of an inch.
Yeah, do one, three quarter, one, one inch and less at three thousand and, and then two inch at six.
Okay. So one inch and less, which is currently fifteen hundred, we need to raise that to three thousand and that's the motion. And then two inch needs to be raised from three thousand to six thousand.
Second.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Just happened to think to bring it, to check on it, bring it to our attention.
Good job. That's all for new business.
Anybody here tonight wanna say anything while you're here, have you got anything for the board?
I'm glad I bought my house two years ago.
Hey, hang on, hang on Jeff.
We're actually gonna discuss that in uh court executive session, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I can kick myself for doing this, but anyway. For starters, we're the folks, we're out on Cemetery Road, built a new house about two years ago. We're in city limits, just bear with me, the road in front of the house is the cutoff. Uh, we pay personal property and real estate taxes to City of Adrian, so shows up on the tax bills. We bought a new camper about a month ago. Went over to Melton while Scott was in rehab, to the license bureau that, there, did the title work. They wouldn't let us, let me pay city tax, sales tax, because according to the state, our address is not in city limits. So, I consulted with City Hall, they suggested I go over to Butler, cause that's who handles, that's, they collect city tax, sales tax there, pump vehicles and stuff, and talked with them. So anyway, I went down to, uh, Butler and checked in with the License Bureau there. They couldn't figure out how to run it in there, uh, because our address shows that we're not in city limits. So, anyway, they consulted with state, Missouri Department of Revenue says, we've already issued the title. We've closed it out, we're done with it, we're not collecting. So now I'm in a quandary because we owe the city sales tax. They like to pay our taxes, we don't like to pay them, but, you know, we, we owe them. And while I still got the money to pay them, I'm just kinda wondering what to do. I've got other things I could use the money for, that's not a problem. We have other expenses, but any, I'm just throwing that out there to see if there's any thoughts on how to handle it from here.
That's a good question. We don't want to have anybody else.
My, my, you know, take, um, is that, you know, the state and the county have both said that you don't owe it.
Both stand, we can have the titles, so.
That's. Merry Christmas.
Though, well, I mean, the, the, the way that we collect those taxes is through the county and if the county messed up on their end, there's really nothing we can do about it without putting together.
Obviously have, have listed the city, when we pay our property taxes.
I showed them the tax bill, both places. We're in city limits.
Thank you for your honesty and for, for coming, uh, bringing it to our attention.
Well, we wouldn't want Mark to get short on his paycheck.
Just go out and get a couple of animals, that'll make up for it.
No, we've got enough. We got the house doggy.
Thank y'all.
Thank you and welcome to Adrian.
Yeah. We, we might recommend coming in more. No, we have.
It's a nice place.
Well, don't be mad at us if that gets all fixed in the next year or two.
We won't be buying any more new campers.
Okay, all right. Thank you guys, appreciate it. And hopefully, hopefully in the next however many months, have some chicken seal out in front of their house.
Yes, that's actually slated for spring, to get that done.
I need agreement with townships too.
Yeah.
And that will cut down the dust.
Yes, yeah.
I mean.
Yes.
We need to have our.
We need to have a little powwow with them, don't we?
Well, we need to have, well, we need to have our label council, uh, um, agreement for the townships.
Okay, all right. All right, anything else you got, uh, that we can talk about in an open session?
I've already said everything I wanted to say.
All right.
Make a motion, we close regular session and move to, uh, executive session, session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Vic? Hummel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Thank you guys.